Okay, at 7:51. Good morning, everybody.
Morning.
All right, so our first agenda item is public comment. Is there anybody out there? Bill?
Uh, nobody is in the waiting.
Okay.
Nobody wants to speak.
Nobody wants to speak. Okay, so, um, actually, before we do the minutes, I just want to flip this over a little bit. And welcome Ed Gillespie to the commission. Yay, we now have fun people.
Welcome, Ed.
So you wanted to, Ed, you just want to take a second and tell everybody a little bit about yourself?
Um, sure. Ed Gillespie, I was invited here by Vince Feeny, who I've known for years. And John Anick was also, and Jim Lang before that were also always talking highly of the commission. I've been in town for 25 years. I've owned a B2B marketing advertising agency that I no longer own, but I still work for. And been working, first started working in video and public access TV when I was in junior high school. And many thousands of years ago, and obviously, our job has kept me well in tune with the video and production, which we do all the time. But I'm, uh, three kids, they all graduated Trumbull High, uh, they're on their way, they're older. And, uh, and I'm a proud authoritarian as well along with things. I don't know what else I'm supposed to say, or?
That was perfect. So, um, you know, we've been trying to get more technical expertise and marketing expertise on the commission. Since Vince and I bring none. And Jens has been filling in across the board. You know, Amy brings some marketing to the table as well, but Ed, we're just really thrilled to have you onboard. I, I think you're going to be a great addition. We have an agenda we run through. Please feel free to jump in at any time and ask questions or volunteer if there's things that you see that you think we should be doing that, that need to be done. Laura runs the station on a day-to-day basis with editing and programming support from Matchlink. We have a cadre of about eight videographers, some adults, some students. And Laura's done a nice job of recruiting more Trumbull High kids. Right now, where I would say we have enough, we're in a pretty good shape in terms of having enough people to cover the stuff that we want to. But there's certainly room for more produced programming. Since we have the studio, um, we just need, uh, you know, some additional support in, I think Laura has great ideas, but it's also some of the production work that mostly post-production or pre-production planning kind of stuff. Cause Laura is, uh, has taught herself a lot of stuff. But more expertise at the table is always helpful. So, any questions right off the bat? Do you know everybody else, who everybody else is, Ed?
Uh, no, not really. I know a lot of the names, but, uh, but we'll, uh,
Well, we'll, we'll go around and do it quickly. So I'm Kate Donahue. I've been chair for a while, been on the commission with Vince for a hundred years. We were a committee, finally achieved commission status, which is actually, although I was not in favor of it initially, I have to say, I think it's worked out pretty well. It used to be a pretty big group and it was hard to get stuff done. Now we have a pretty focused contingent. And we seem to have gotten things move or moved forward. I spent 20 years in the cable television industry on the programming side. So that's been my interest from the beginning in community-based programming. But I have not, I have no technical expertise. I was on the business side of that. I was born and raised in Trumbull, left for a long time and have been back about 25 years. Also, my kids went through Trumbull High, as did I. Okay, Vince?
Well, I think Ed knows me pretty well. So we've been on roadwork together for many years. So I don't think I need to go any further than that, Ed, right?
He's our numbers guy on, on election night.
Yeah, I've been, as Kate said, I've been on the committee since, you know, it started years.
I don't even remember Vince, when, when like, I think Anick got me on when I got here in like 95 or 96.
Yeah, I was gonna say, it's gotta be over 20 years ago that we started it.
But we look exactly the same.
We do, we do. But it's been a lot, it's been a lot of fun. We've come, come a long, long way since the early days.
Jens?
Yes. Hi, Ed.
How are you?
Uh, I'm fine, thanks. Uh, I've seen your name around. Um, and you, you, you always come across as a nice guy, so. That's a good start. No idea that Kate had 20 years in the cable industry, but there you go. So, um, I have been working, first, I've lived in Trumbull for 25 years. I came over from England with work. And, um, I've been an engineer for 40 years with computer networking, you know, integration of all kinds of systems. And I'm currently unemployed because that's just, the way things are at the moment. But, um, I've been doing video for the last 10 years. I do a lot of streaming, try to create appliances that make streaming easier and more reliable and stuff like that. So, yeah, I'm a technical, technical guy. And it's nice to meet you and nice to have you on the, on the, on the commission.
Thank you. And is it yen, gens, or how did you say it?
It's yen, like the, um, the Japanese currency.
Thank you.
Laura?
I, um, I've been in Trumbull for almost 20 years now. My undergrad degree is in radio, television and film, but I ended up not using it. I worked in technology publishing and then I went to media buying on the promotion side. And then I went to the interactive space and I last worked in a, well, not even a corporate environment, at a startup for a software development company doing product management. But I am the program manager for the station and I've been here, I was trying to think about how long, Kate, it was like seven years, maybe eight years.
Yep.
Yeah, but I've got three kids. My oldest just finished his freshman year at my alma mater. And I've got a sophomore and an eighth grader who will soon be juniors, a junior and a freshman at Trumbull High. So, um, I've been volunteering in the Trumbull Public Schools for, since my oldest was in kindergarten. So, um, yeah, I'm pretty well, you know, tapped into the town and the school district. And I started at the station as an editor. And then, um, I stepped into the scheduling, producing side. So that's, um, yeah, I've been, we've been pretty much, I've been learning a lot of stuff as we go. We learned the whole streaming process once the pandemic happened. So, uh, and you know, things have just been evolving since, you know, we've started, we do a live election show during the municipal election years and we've kind of morphed that into various things. We've started handing that over to the students at Trumbull High, which has been in terms of the content and we've handed the backend. So it's, it's been a lot of fun. It's been really, um, it's been a lot of fun, learning lots and lots of new things and changing on a dime as the need arises.
Nice to meet you, Laura.
Nice to meet you.
Has really taken the sta, I mean, I think there's one person that's been responsible for taking the station to a next level. Just her ideas, her willingness to follow through and make sure things get done and then look at, do a triage afterward to say, okay, what could we have done better? We're just in this continuous improvement mode. So it's, um, it's very gratifying because she rarely says no. She always says, all right, I'll figure out some way to do this. So we like those kinds of people.
Thank you.
Okay, so let's, um, let's get back to the agenda. So we have our minutes from, um, the April meeting.
We don't want to know about anything about Bill?
Oh, no, where's Bill? No, yeah, Bill, come on. You're the, you're the thing that holds this, this whole thing together.
Hi, I'm, I'm just here. Um, my name's Bill Chin. I'm the IT director for the town of Trumbull. So that's my role on this committee. So I'll help with, uh, getting things done in town hall and, and all that. I grew up in Trumbull, graduated from Trumbull High School, went to Fairfield U for information systems, computer stuff. Uh, so I'm a, I'm an IT guy.
But he has been like, the relationship the station has had with him has made so many of the technical things possible. It's like, it can't even be overstated that if we didn't have his support on the town side, because the education side doesn't give us as much support. Let's just put it that way. Bill really has literally held this thing together behind the scenes technically. So.
He's our tech guru.
And if we don't, um, and he gets the meetings on the air. He's the guy to go to if we, we run into any problems over at town hall with our equipment there or, he's usually able to figure out the way through town hall for us if we gotta navigate our way. Okay, thank you Laura for that. Sorry, Bill, you're, I was going around the wrong way. Okay, let's go back to the approval of the 20 April minutes. Anybody, I need a motion and a second and then we can discuss.
I'll make a motion to accept.
Thank you Vince.
I'll second it.
And second, okay. Any comments or changes?
Nope.
Okay, all those in favor of approving the minutes? Aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Nay? Abstain? Yep, you need to abstain. Okay, so next time you can vote on them, Ed. Okay, great. All right, so update on our finances. Let me share my screen. So this is our, our fiscal year runs July 1 to June 30th, like aligned with the town and the schools. As usual, we have not spent all our money. So Laura, you can go nuts in June if you want. If there's stuff you want to do.
I'm almost there.
So I mean, as usual, we're under budget. We're, we're in good shape. The May numbers, I'm just, I'm just starting to get May invoices in from the videographer. So it's going to be higher. We have the concerts and, you know, a bunch of spring sports in May. So we're definitely going to be spending more and we have a little bit more on programming supplies to spend. What was the last one, Laura, that just came in this week? We have a.
Uh, you mean in terms of the subscriptions? I think Adobe Creative Cloud.
Right, right, right. And then we, um, our actual spend this year was for two camera setups because we ended up doing the stream, streaming server in last year's fiscal budget. Um, and now let me switch to, so any questions about this year that expires the end of June?
So I still have a couple, a little bit more in terms of ability to spend?
Yes.
Okay.
Well, we can go over what, um, okay, and then this is the, the last word I have on our budget for next year. I'm waiting for Dan Martin at town hall to send me the final, final one, which he says will be ready this week. We took our videographer request down a little bit. Because we just don't always spend the money. We're also, we also took down the supervising producer a little bit because Matt doesn't seem to be spending as much time. You know, Laura puts in about, I don't know, Laura, you're working like between 15 and 20 hours. Ish.
Yeah, depending on the season.
And then all of our miscellaneous expenses are pretty, are pretty consistent from year to year. We are looking to replace, uh, four of our 10-year-old cameras. We asked for four, we got two, but we actually bought two of them this year. So I think this is going to be fine. And then these are the, you know, the subscriptions for the software that we use to run the station or, um, save our programming. So I don't expect, uh, the final budget to look any different. The town council, to the best of my knowledge, did not reduce any of our spending. So questions on that? And this will take effect July 1. Okay. So any questions on those?
Nope.
Nope.
Okay, onto programming. Laura?
Programming, um, it is crazy. The lack of snow days has really crunched everything into very compressed everything to a very short time period. So general programming, it's, you know, it's concert season, everybody's favorite time of year. I am behind, I'm putting those on air because we have had, our student videographers love to record the sports, which is fantastic. So I've been getting those up because I feel that those are a little more timely than, um, the concerts. So those have been going up. There hasn't been a lot of adult education outside of the school stuff this time of year. I'm hoping to get more up over the summer, but, um, the good news about having this backlog of shows is that once, you know, once the school year ends and all that programming is over and a lot of the meetings go on their summer schedules, then we will have some new programming to put on the air. Where usually July is just a lot of reruns. So sports, we've had, like I said, we've had a great turnout with the students. They've been recording a lot of lacrosse and we added rugby this year. Have a lot of volleyball and baseball and softball. So that's been great. It's been a good experience for the students. Graduation is coming up, so we've got that ready to go. Ed, we live stream that onto YouTube. So we'll be doing that. We'll actually also be live streaming Hillcrest's stepping forth ceremony, which we haven't done since the pandemic, but we're doing that because, again, because of all this compressed end of year stuff. They, excuse me, they had to do their stepping forth on Monday, the 12th at 1:00 PM. Instead of at 4:30 in the afternoon. So a lot of working parents couldn't make it. So I offered to livestream. So I'll be sitting in the audience cheering for my son and with an iPad on my lap.
So are we going to do Madison too?
Madison is still at 4:30 because they do it in their gym.
Right. Okay, so let me just figure out how I'm going to put this in the meeting.
We're going to accommodate the, we're live streaming as a courtesy to working parents because the time, you know, the, the only availability for the gym was 1:00 PM on a Monday.
Okay. Okay, great. Um, and graduation, we're live streaming as well, right?
Yep. We are, it's been, Todd Manuel has been fantastic about looping me in on all of the prep meetings. So nothing, you know, everything is the same. We have the same audio vendor. So it's just going to be the same setup as it's been for the past couple of years, which is great. The only thing I need to find out is what time we can get back into the high school because once the kids are out, they shut the building to do a security sweep. So once that, that is done, then we'll be able to get back in. I just need to find out what that time is, probably like 1:00, 2:00 o'clock, which should be fine.
Okay, and then original programming?
Um, honestly, we have been so booked up with concerts and sports and like cameras have been flying everywhere that I have not been able to touch. I literally had to bring one of the ancient, like 50-pound cameras out of retirement because all four of the other cameras were out recording events. So it's been like, I don't, this is like pre-pandemic level of busyness, which is good. So yeah, yay. Um, but it'll be really nice when we get, when we're able to, you know, add another couple because those two new cameras have made a huge difference. It's just so much easier to maneuver with lighter equipment. Obviously.
Okay.
So once, you know, once graduation is over and I have a couple of days to kind of reset my brain, then I can start, you know, really, and summer's a great time for us to do original programming because there's, again, the summer schedules, a lot of commissions don't meet. There's no school events, you know, there are fewer things happening in town.
So we do the, the gazebo concerts?
Yeah, Richie's going to record those again.
Okay. So those are definitely on the schedule for the summer?
Yep.
Okay, great.
And that's usually, you know, again, as typical, that's the only, um, original, you know, and then there's an occasional library event. But you know, where, I mean, it's, this is the first time I can remember where I've had to kind of, you know, I've thrown a lot of stuff on the board. But I don't have enough people or equipment to cover it because again, these three, these first 14 days of June are just jam.
Ridiculous. Yeah.
Yeah, it's insane. And then next year's probably going to be the same because the school calendar, the scheduled last day is June 7th for next year. Yeah.
Oh my gosh, wow.
Have we ever rented equipment? If, I mean, if we're really in a, in a pickle?
We've never had to. The only, what's good, actually, um, Josh Murphy, the band director, um, actually gave me a couple tripods that he found. And thank God he did because, um, yeah, we only have, you know, one of the tripods I, we, I need to fix. But, um, yeah, we've had enough. Like we actually had five cameras and five tripods out at one point, which is the most we've had out in, like I said, since pre-COVID.
So what's, what's our, our videographer to camera ratio?
Um, trying to think, we have three active students.
Let me just rewind that because I just want to go, I'm trying to focus on what you just said. So the five, that means there were five events going on at the same time.
Yes.
Or overlapping, right? Where you had five videographers, five cameras with tripods going out.
Right.
That, I can't remember that happening before.
I can't remember that since like Katie and George and the dynamic duo were still here. It's been years since we've had that. And this was between sports and school events, not even government meetings. So.
If, if I can just take us back to renting, I mean, for, for 40 bucks, 50 bucks for a week, you could rent a, a good camera. So if it's like, um, you know, graduation or anything that is like a peak, you know, you, you can't, you can't get equipment to cover all. Well, you could, but it's unrealistic. So you have an average and then sometimes it just peaks where you could bring in rented equipment. Same make, same model as what we currently have, but.
Fortunately for graduation, we have all of our equipment and it was just, you know, again, we had, because sports, I mean, right now, you know, the championship events are still happening. Like, you know, I know that my son plays volleyball and they had to reschedule tomorrow's volleyball game to Saturday because it's the prom. So it's like all of the sports are still going. We're not recording the championship stuff because a lot of it's at neutral sites. And it's just, again, it's just too much. You know, it's a lot. The students have a hard, you know, it's, they don't all drive. You know, I don't want them bringing the equipment to ward. I don't know anybody at these, you know.
That's, that's fair enough. That's fair enough.
But, um, yeah, you know, again, sports and concert, you know, there are nights where there's a game and then there's two concerts happening. And then there's, you know, there was Honor Society asked me to record something, you know, for middle school. So it's, you know.
So Laura, maybe you could at least talk to Jens and see if, if we needed to, you know, get a relationship with somebody, right? So that if we, we found ourselves in that situation, you would already know who to go to.
Fair point.
Yeah, so one of, that's probably worth doing.
Yeah, absolutely.
Okay, great. All right, so anything else on programming?
No, but I still have that list again, that we had, um, we had brainstormed some ideas at the last meeting that I still have that I want to approach in terms of veterans. Can't remember what else. Pickleball, farmer's market, there were a lot of other things.
Let's see, what's on my minutes here, something? Oh, here we go. Pickleball, Canoe Brook Lake. Okay, so let me, um, add this.
Thank you.
I'm just doing minutes while we go. Okay. Uh, all right, anybody have any other, so that, let me just go through those ideas from last time. They were pickleball, Canoe Brook Lake Association, interviews with Korean vet, vet, Vietnam War vets, farmers markets, you know, lever site repurposing and other sites, you know, maybe what's, when they finally announce what they're doing with the Trumbull Mall, blah, blah, blah. Okay. Anything else? Any other ideas, thoughts?
It's, it's, um, first selectman year, election year. What do we normally do apart from covering the actual event in the, do we?
The debates?
Yeah.
If there are them. So yeah, I will add election year.
I will also reach out to, um, PTA council in the past. They have held debates for, uh, Board of Finance and Board of Education. So I will see if they're doing that. And if they're not, I will strongly recommend that they start, they do that, they consider.
Yeah, we really are the election night, I mean, we're the only ones doing live results, so, um.
Yeah, we really, really cleaned that up last time. Uh, for 10, 15 minutes before anyone else and everyone was quoting the results. And the presentation of course was, was beautiful. Um, Vince, you need a, we need a big board for Vince.
Yeah, a big board.
Yeah, we keep the whiteboard behind him.
Right, right.
See, the Doug Cornack of Trumbull.
Yes.
We could do a map of the, of the districts and kids might be able to do that, who knows?
Yeah, right.
All right, so that's on the list now, the election I program.
Uh, pardon me, Angela, is, are we always doing like a one-camera shoot or are we ever having like three cameras at a event or?
We, government meetings are usually one camera. Um, the times that we do multiple cameras are graduation. We have three cameras for that. Football, we've been doing, we've been live streaming football games. We do that in the fall. And with videographer availability, usually it's the availability of videographers. So for football, we've been doing two-camera shoots. Um, it just, it depends on, you know, the need and the event.
Now you're doing live technical directing on site?
For the live streams, yeah.
Yep.
The, the government meetings, like the Board of Education is a multi-camera.
Yes, that's true. That's true.
And the town hall when the.
But that's, yeah, that's dependent on the equipment because we have a video distribution system in Board of Education and in chambers. So meetings held in those locations, yes, they're multi-camera.
And we do have multiple cameras in the studio. So if we were to produce something in the studio, then we can.
Right. Election night is one example of a multi-camera event that's in the studio.
Have you been to the studio, Ed?
Trumbull, one, I've been to the one up in the Spectrum.
Okay, so Laura, you need to get him up there to take a look at what we've got, you know, that, that's where, like, suggest anything, right? We, we're open. We, sometimes we don't even know what we don't know, so.
Exactly. Yeah, shoot me an email and we can, you know, we can come up with, um, or I'll email you and we can come up with a day and a time where, you know, to come into the high school.
Thank you.
Sure.
Okay, good. All right, anything else on programming? In this hay fever, I'm
It's awful.
Smoke, that whatever the wildfire thing is, I'm dying. So sorry for all the sniffles. Uh, okay, any other programming stuff?
Not on my end.
Okay, then let's jump down to technical. Billy, how we doing, man? On the council chambers, video distribution system?
So the council chambers video distribution system did, ended, um, I guess this, two weeks ago, maybe. Kevin was, Kevin Bova was going through and, um, evaluating the bid. I think there were two, two vendors, but one vendor had a few different alternates. Made, made a few different alternate, alternate recommendations. I actually met with them prior to, prior to them submitting the bid, they came in and wanted to look at the space. So we, we had a meeting about that. So I knew they were going to offer some alternatives, some potentially good ideas. Kevin started doing all that and then, uh, his wife got sick and she passed. So he's been out of the office for last week and a half, I think. He, he's back in today, received an email from him today, but, um, that's all on hold until Kevin can, um, continue and finish his evaluation of that. Uh, once that happens, though, we, we can make the bid, um, award and we'll move forward to schedule and purchase and all that stuff.
Is DNI one of the bidders?
Uh, they are.
Okay.
Then I believe they were below bid, um, even on the first, um, what, the, the equipment.
That's, yeah, Gene Derold told me that, that, that is the case.
Okay, so, um, my heart goes out to Kevin. I just, Robin was somebody special and she fought hard, but.
Oh my God, I didn't realize who that is.
Yeah.
Oh, that's, that's absolutely heartbreaking.
And she was so, you know, Laura, you remember when she was involved in PTA? She was, she was one of PTA council presidents, I think at one point, and then became a para. She taught. Um, she was, she was one of kept PTA Council Presidents, I think, at one point, and then became a para. She taught. Um. Zumba at LA Fitness. So I mean, her class was always full, like to the max. Um. And she's, I mean, this, the the cancer things has been going on for years, you know, just. And she she really, she really fought long and hard, so really devastating. And I hadn't put it together with Kevin either until I like read the obituary. I'm like, oh, my God, I, how did I not? Realize that, but um, yeah, very sad. Okay, equipment. So uh, I've added the note that we can rent equipment if needed and you guys are going to work together on that. What else? Uh, what else do we need or are we looking for uh, Laura, that we can buy? Now, before the.
I I think, you know, one of the tripods that we have, like I said, I don't know if I could fix it, but we could replace it and then possibly get another just so we have that. You know, equipment on hand. The only other thing I could think of is just some miscellaneous office, maybe a couple other pairs, you know, headphones and. Things like that, like I bought a while ago, I bought like a ten pack of earbuds to just throw in with all the cameras, maybe just, you know. Like I said, headphone, little miscellaneous.
Yep.
That are not too expensive, but I can put together a list and.
Yeah, and yeah.
P O for you.
And we'll just have to figure out what um budget line they're going to go under because we have, we have money. The one that I had from last meeting that we were supposed to do something about and I completely forgot until I wrote up this agenda. Three days ago was the backup cloud decision.
Yeah, yeah. And then like, and then, you know, again, June came and then everything blew up, like.
I just, I couldn't even remember like what the issue was, so um.
It was an issue of, you know, right now we're using, uh, what happened was we are using external hard drives to archive all of our programming. And we have redundancy, so we have a copy of the archive. But, you know, one of the external hard drives failed, just became corrupt over time and they're not designed to last forever. So that's the issue is, you know, um, using Amazon. Glacier systems for archiving and it's just a matter of. Um, it's, I tried using their, you know, a couple of times I tried using their pricing calculator and. I I don't know that I'm, you know, I just want to sit down again with you especially because.
I mean, we could add add into this conversation if you feel like you could bring some value and then.
Yes.
Add is that? Can you help us with this?
Hmm.
Okay.
Yeah, because I just want to make sure that I'm calculating this right. I don't want there to be any like, oops, forgot, you know, this three hundred dollar charge or whatever. And then just to come up with some sort of um. Process procedure, like how long do we want to keep government meetings? You know, we've got like literally a shelf. That's, you know, maybe three feet wide by a foot and a half high, full of compact VHS tapes, full of meetings. Do we? You know, from two thousand thirteen.
But where you can find them? Are they just labeled or uh, is there?
They're all, they're all labeled, but it's, you know, again, it's one of those things where, once we started saving them digitally. How long do we want to go back? We can go, you know, our our archive goes back to about ten years. You know, I, there can be value because there's been times where people have been like, oh, can you pull up this planning and zoning meeting from two thousand fifteen? Do you have the, you know, I just got an email from somebody saying, oh, do you have the, you know, Trumble High Concerts from two thousand sixteen and so.
We'd made it, we'd make a fortune if if Tim Herbst ran for for president. We have, or anyone, I mean.
My my brother works for uh, uh, Universal Studios and and uh, he said, we shared this weekend that. Even Amazon is dealing with issues of like storage. So like, how do you keep in store and maintain all this stuff? And when do you, how do you do that? So it's a, it's a huge cost for.
So if you guys, if you guys could could do two things, one is come up with a recommendation on the tech model, like how should we? Keep what we have, but then also maybe start at least coming up with the the decisions we need to make about policy. So we can start the policy work. Do we have, do we have one criteria for government meetings? Do we have another for school? Like what, how would, how would we think about breaking this down? Um, you know, normally we would have a separate committee to do that, but we're only five. So I think if we can break it up into pieces and maybe discuss. Because we we're the ones that need to decide this.
Right, I mean, basically, all the um programming, you know, as far as I'm, you know, and again, you guys may just, you can. You know, try and we can get more granular, but like I, in my head, I sort of divided between government and education. And and education is anything that's not a government. But under that education, we do have, you know, sports. Interstitials, musical performances, things like that, adult education, school events. So we can get more granular with that stuff if we choose. And the nice thing is, in our scheduling system. I do specify those subcategories. If you want to get more granular, that's already done for us. So we don't have to go back through and come through that programming to see what. You know, what category it falls under.
So is there a way that you can put, that you can pull some data like right now to say whatever you have data on? However, many years going back. Well, how many hours of programming for each year or is there for each category?
I can, I can, um, I can look into, when I get into the studio, I can look in and see. You know, go into the scheduling software and see if I can pull that information. What I'd been using for data is basically, um. You know, the hard drives, the capacity of the hard drives, because everything has been government meetings and then all shows, which includes government meetings. If that makes sense. That's how Donna had set it up. I just continued it on the hard drives. And I've been using. You know, the government meeting size and then just sort of extrapolating the education stuff from there.
Well, do you see what I'm getting at? I'm trying to get a handle on for the last three or four years. Like, how many hours of government pro programming have have been created? How many hours of concerts, how many hour, whatever, however you're categorizing.
Okay. Yeah, I can, I'll pull them from um, from the scheduling system. I'll go back as far back as we can go and I'll see if I can break it out by year.
Because, yeah, to me, there's, there's philosophically, what do we keep? But that, but the volume of it also matters, I think. I just want to make sure we take that into account. Does that make sense, Jens and Ed, or am I thinking about this incorrectly?
I I think um, I think we may be overthinking it because um. Uploading things into AWS doesn't cost you anything. It's when you want to get the data out that costs you something. And storing the stuff is ninety nine cents per terabyte per month, so it it is really cheap. It it's cheaper than buying hard drives. So I wouldn't worry too much about what goes up there. I would worry about or not worry about, I would make sure I had some kind of. Um, if somebody comes along and says, I would like to get a um, a copy of the meeting from, you know, twenty fourteen. That we charged them fifty bucks for it, which would more than cover our expenses. And just have an organized way of putting it up there so we can find it.
Okay, so then never mind on that. But then part of the policy is. Going to be, what do we charge to, for people to get it out?
And it's always been, you know, there's always been this, when we were, when we were burning DVDs, it was always a courtesy that. You know, Sean would burn them for meetings for people in town hall making requests. Now, given that we're going to be incurring costs on download, do we continue to do that? Do we request that they, you know what I mean? Do we ask town hall?
So I mean.
Those tend to be the people who want the government meetings, you know, families and stuff want. You know, school events, but those they tend to request a little more. You know, recently, not going three, four years back. This was a real outlier of a request that I got.
So I had to restart a project, uh, two hundred and fifty gigabytes worth of data and it was nine dollars and fifty cents to get it out. So two hundred and fifty gigs is is probably more than we have on all the tapes combined. I I'm guessing, but I don't think that's unrealistic. So um, I. You you would expect to to pay for something, getting something out of archive. Um, if it's all, if it's online, if you have it, we could be courteous about it and just say, here's a copy, but. If it's a ten-year-old program, then I think it's fair enough, we charge.
Well, if you guys can work, you know, kind of work on some of those ideas.
Yes.
Laura has been working a lot and I've I've been saying, yeah, that's great, that's great. I haven't really done anything with it. So um, that's a promise to. To start doing something with it.
So you bring, so you bring like a recommendation to us so that we can work through it. I don't want to do the policy in the meeting if we can help it. Because I think there is some reflection and, you know, some idea of, okay, how many times is the town requesting us for copies of media? I I have no idea what that is.
Hmm.
How often that is.
Okay, Laura.
Yeah, once graduation ends. Yeah, after June fourteenth, my camera, my my calendar will be much clearer.
You see this? Pinky, pinky promise. It was, it was, yeah, no, I'm not. You get it, it wasn't.
Okay, let's, let's keep going. Um, anything else on technical issues? Okay, marketing P and PR. Uh, we had. We were, I think, let me just look at last, no, it's still on, um. You've been using buffer and so far you've been successful in posting to social media and the schedule, so I I don't, I. Not sure what else we were planning to do on that.
Me neither. Uh, the only other thing I could say is like, for instance, uh, we livestreamed the Powderpuff Game, so like. And it just happened to be a, you know, pouring rainy day, of course. But like I took a picture of the girl who sang the National Anthem and posted that on Facebook. Like if we're streaming live, I'll. Try to include a picture and say, hey, join us on GCTV Trumbull on YouTube because we're going to stream this event. So, and I did that for, also for when we were doing the middle school basketball championships, so. Oh, Ed, we have.
The thing here, I think we could talk more is is uh, creating short versions of footage. So like taking the Powderpuff Game and doing the thirty-second video or the or the ninety-second video that drives to the, is that?
It, that's a great idea. It's just, uh, and it's not that it's nothing we. I would love to do that. It's a matter of manpower and hours in the day, because it's a very um, MacGyver-y type setup. With myself and with, you know, because there's.
It sounds like a great club for Trumbull High School.
That's something that we've been working on. We have been working on that. Um, that's, that's coming up next in the T H S connection, so.
I thought the kids would be way more interested in getting into this because, you know, everyone has a. A YouTube channel and wants to become uh, an influencer and need skills to edit that. Um, but in my experience, unfortunately, the the interest just isn't there and I'm not, you know, we talked about if we could. Make it more interesting. Is it because it's not available? Is it, and I don't, I think it's just lack of interest from the students, unfortunately.
I think, I think it's a couple of things. I think it's lack of knowledge because when the video, when Nick and Donna, the new tech guy teacher brought the kids in. The first thing they go is, I didn't know this was here. And, you know, and then that's kind of it. The issue I, that I have come across, Jens, is that I have a number of friends whose kids, you know, were interested in video production. They don't want to record things they can't edit and they don't want to record government meetings or concerts. That's not exciting. They want to make. Movies, they want to make music videos, they want to do all these other things. And I get it, because if I, when I was their age, that's the stuff I wanted to make too. Um, that said, I had a teacher reach out to me about a student who's. Uh, going to be a junior next year who's interested in getting involved at the station. Um, I asked if she would be, she. She wanted to know if there was a way for her to have an internship and it's hard for me. It's not that I'm not willing to have students come in. It's just. You know, again, there's not a lot happening. So what I did is I asked if she was, if she would be interested in being a videographer and she's very interested. And what I think would be great, what I would like to do is to get her, because she's more involved, more interested in the production and. I would like to get her involved as maybe a student producer for the election night show, because that would give her some time to kind of ramp up. And then work with the students, um, as we've done in the past and maybe, you know. Help with that end and then sort of be like a liaison between what the students are planning and then helping us. You know, set that up. In the past, we've had the kids go out and do man on the street interviews and get some, you know, ask the kids at the school. Who are about to turn eighteen, who can vote, like what issues were important to them and like just some B-roll um, content. So I'm hoping that this student could help facilitate some of that. And if she want, you know, if she or some other students chose to edit that, that would be fantastic.
Hmm.
And I know, again, the the AV club is something that's. Um. I don't think it's going to happen in twenty-three, twenty-four, Kate, but if I'm not mistaken, Nick got approval. For a next level video production class, I think for twenty-four, twenty-five school year. And he wants to incorporate, and it would incorporate creating the announcements and that sort of thing.
That would be great.
And that would.
Have you ever explored uh, uh, the local universities, Sacred Heart Fairfield?
That, we're a government, we're a government slash education channel specific to Trumbull. So, so. The events that we cover are here. Are are you talking about?
Right, I'm not talking to cover events. I'm talking like to do post-production and things like that.
Not, I'm not sure what you mean.
Oh, as editors and.
You mean recruit students from the colleges to do editing and stuff?
Or bake it into their classwork?
Hmm.
I think that's a good idea because it's it's relevant work. It's it's not just, you know, here, here's a sample, go, you know, show me how you can edit it to make it interesting. This, this would be real. Uh, real work. So I I think it's worth a shot if it's within the, the charter, whatever that is. Or, you know, having someone, I guess it doesn't matter if they're Trumbull residents or not, if they help edits, I guess it.
But it doesn't matter because some of our videographers don't live in Trumbull. That's not really. You know, do you, Ed, do you have any um, contacts at Sacred Heart or Fairfield or U B or wherever? Like, do you know any of the or who the?
My son graduated from the film and TV program from Fairfield a while ago, so I'm sure I could.
Oh.
Oh, cool.
I used to have connections in the education department, but or grad ed, you know.
Yeah, I just want to get to speed more first on the over operation first and then I can kind of make, make more sense of what.
Yeah.
So then I think. Um. That visit's going to be important.
After June fourteenth.
Alright, um. That's a great idea.
Yeah.
Alright, so that's going to be Ed and Laura. So. You know, we got Sean here for a reason, Ed. Good.
Ed, do you want to be involved in that um, AWS, um, the storage archiving thing?
Yes, I think we said we were going to add him in that. Okay, what else we got?
Um, Kate, I'm sure you are aware that Markarino is um, leaving Trumbull High at the end of this year, so. Hope, I don't, you know, we don't know who the, you know, I don't know who's going to take over. Um, I don't know. Where Todd Manuel will be next year. He may still be house principal. We, you know, there, that process has just started, so.
Yeah, I know, I'm.
Looking for the next person. So.
So we may be find ourselves having to restart new relationships or start new relationships.
It's a possibility. I just don't know, you know, we don't know.
Well, I'm concerned if Todd doesn't get the job that um, he's not going to stay.
Um, I don't know. I mean, I had seen him at a school event. He just wasn't sure if it's right for his family. Because his kids are younger. His oldest is going to be a freshman.
Yeah, but he's the best guy for the job.
I agreed.
By far.
And again, it's just, it's a matter of, he's not sure if he wants to be building principal, not not just Trumbull High Principal. He just doesn't know if he wants to be a principal of an entire high school right now. I don't know that he wants.
Yeah, hopefully he would, he would stay with us if.
Yeah.
Even though a building principal is what he ultimately wants, I believe.
I I believe so too. I just don't know. And again, it it's going to depend on who comes in because he's done so mu, you know, he. Takes on so much. So I, yeah, I don't know. I don't know. I kind of. Like I said, the impression I got from him was he just needed to think on it to see if the additional hours would make sense, given the ages of his kids. But I do know that a lot of, a lot of families in town would be very supportive of that move.
Yep. Okay, well, we'll have to keep an eye on that. Hopefully they. Make a decision soon and.
I know the search committee, um I know that the search has started, the, I know that. One of the PTA Trumbull High Presidents was on it and is on the interview committee. And um they met yesterday with the first round and I think, I don't know if it's this week or next week where they're having some. Like outside candidates come in, so.
So there were more peop, more internal people, internal Trumbull people that wanted Trumbull's public school.
I don't know, you know, again, I don't know all the specifics. I I just know that there were some internal people that they had interviewed and. Uh you know, I don't know. I don't know if it was a courtesy. I don't know if they just said. You know, if those are people who threw the hat in the ring, I I do not.
Usually they give courtesy interviews to anybody internal that wants a job. It's been my experience. Okay. All right, we'll have to see what happens. Fingers crossed, because Todd has been um a great partner for us. Yeah, he's really been. Been good. Okay, anybody have anything else? Any miscellaneous items, questions, things we should be? Nope.
No.
All right, Ed, I'm really, really excited that you're on here. I can feel like a burst of new activity as a result. This is going to be cool. Um, all right, if we don't have anything else, then I am going to adjoint, adjourn the meeting at eight forty two. And we, our next meeting is July thirteenth. Um same time, same bat station and look forward to seeing you all then. Have a great Jo, June. After June fourteenth.
To make it through. I've got post prom tomorrow night.
And how are they going to play volleyball? I hope the game's not early on Saturday.
Uh I think it's, I I don't know. It's like five or six. My son's only at sophomore, so I.
Oh, okay, so he's not going.
He'll be riding the bench. He he got called up for the championships in states.
That's exciting.
He was so excited.
And I love volleyball. I just wish my son had played for the current coach, because.
Trauma is, yeah. Yeah, he, like I said, he never played until this year and a couple, last year, and a couple of his friends from bands are on the volleyball team. They're graduating this year and they were like.
Fun, it's so much fun.
He's like six one, so of course Coach Z was like, hey, do you play volleyball?
You got long arms.
Took to it like a duck to water. He loves it and it's, it's so much fun to watch. It's such a fun sport.
It's a good sport, yeah.
Yes, now I got to shell out money for club.
You do. All right, everybody, have a good day.
Bye.
Bye, everybody.
See you later. Bye.